Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Library Board Meeting. Can we have a call of the roll?
Mr. Peter.
Present.
Dr. Martada.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Yolo.
Present.
Dr. White.
Present.
And do we have Ms. Flitterd? Yet? On Zoom? Not yet. Okay, we do have a quorum, sir.
All right, the chair recognizes a quorum. Thank you very much. So, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the board, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the Indianapolis Public Library's November two thousand and twenty-five Board of Trustees Meeting hosted at the Irvington Branch. My name is Ray Beederman, and I'm the President of the Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. First, I would like to congratulate one of our board members. Congratulations to Dr. Kala Martada, recipient of the Tau Chapter Yes Award from the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Inc. This honor recognizes her outstanding leadership, dedication to youth, and lifelong commitment to education and service. We'd also like to celebrate her impact on students, families, and communities across Indianapolis and beyond. Thank you. This week, we celebrate Thanksgiving, a time to reflect on what we're grateful for. Before we start tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment and share my gratitude. On behalf of the board, to the people that make our library system exceptional. First, to our staff. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity and pleasure to attend part of Staff Day, a day dedicated to professional development, training, and recognition. It was easy to witness the camaraderie among our employees and their passion for public service. We're thankful to these dedicated library professionals for serving in our community every day. Also, we're grateful to the many new cardholders that have joined us this year, and for our longstanding loyal patrons who visit our branches or connect with us online each week. Our community is the reason we do this work. The board is also thankful for how the Indianapolis Public Library is successfully delivering on our strategic plan objectives. We seem to be in a time when many institutions, both public and private, are making tough choices. Other organizations have been forced to consolidate or eliminate services or go away entirely. The challenge at this institution is different. Our community is asking for more of this institution, as reflected in the comments we receive and in the data we review. That positive demand is proof of our relevance, our value, and the trust people place in the Indianapolis Public Library. High demands mean that we matter. It means our branches are vibrant, our programs are meaningful, and the vast collections are essential to the people we serve. It means our strategic focus is working, and we are on a good trajectory. This board is thankful for and proud of this trajectory and the sign of strength the demand for our services represents as an organization. Thank you, everyone. As we look ahead to the holiday weekend, I'd like to remind our community that our branches will be open on Black Friday. If you're looking for a break from the shopping crowds or from leftovers at home, we welcome you to stop by with your family. Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving. Now, I'll invite Mr. Adam Todd, Irvington Branch Manager, to the microphone to share his branch report. Mr. Todd?
President Beederman, members of the Library Board, thank you for coming out tonight. Welcome to Irvington, and thanks for letting us host you. We're glad to have you. So, let's see where we are. It's like my TV remote. All right, so, anyway, thanks for coming out. So, here at the Irvington Branch, we have four full-time librarians, including me. We have one part-time librarian. We have a full-time Public Services Associate, a full-time circulation supervisor, three full-time library clerks, two part-time library clerks, four pages, and a full-time library security assistant. Our library security assistant, just in the last few weeks, has gone from part-time to full-time. Gregory and John were able to make that happen, and we really appreciate it. She's been very valuable to us. She's done a really nice job making connections with some of our most vulnerable patrons and also our teenagers who are here in the afternoon. So, it's been, it's been really great having her, and having her full-time's even better. So, we're happy about that. Who we serve, in terms of age distribution, our largest population's twenty to sixty-four. And then we have, you know, next up is zero to nineteen at twenty-five percent, and then sixty-five plus is fourteen percent. Our racial distributions for our service areas, Caucasian sixty-four percent, African-American twenty-two percent, Hispanic eleven, and other multiple three percent. Our base population for the service area is forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-four. We have thirteen schools, public and private, including IPS and Warren Township, and then the Irvington Community Charter Schools, which are the closest to us at this branch, and we have forty-nine churches in our service area. How we serve, so, last year, we had ninety-eight thousand eighty-five registered borrowers at this branch, and we did one thousand sixty new library cards. So, Andrea Baughman, who you can see in that picture there, she's our circulation supervisor, and just like you say, she does an amazing job, and her team does a great job, too, with working with our patrons, getting people signed up for cards, and they do a wonderful job, and a lot, too, as you can see by the numbers. We had a door count of one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine last year, two hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-two in total circulation, nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one computer sessions, and nine thousand five hundred and seventy reference assists. Also, our reference team, the librarians and public service associates, do a lot of great work, helping people with, you know, everything from your standard ref, reference questions, reader's advisory, to computer help, all those sorts of things, and they do a lot of great work here as well. Programming, so, we do a weekly baby and toddler storytime on Wednesday mornings. A thing we've started within the last year or so is a monthly pajama storytime. That's in the evenings. It's, kids can wear their pajamas, bring their stuffed animals. It's considerably, you know, a little quieter than, the daytime storytime tends to be a lot of singing and jumping and stuff, but this is, you know, designed to get the kids kind of ready for bed. So, it's a different vibe, but the families have really been enjoying it. During the school year, we have a teen zone in this room in the afternoons. We get, you know, like thirty to forty kids usually in the afternoons, mostly from the Irvington Community Schools, the high school and the middle school. Ryan and Katie are children's librarians, and teen librarians do a great job creating activities for these kids, developing relationships with them, games, contests, things like that. And we have a lot of kids who are really enthusiastic about the program, so it's worked out, it's worked out very well. We do a monthly family games program. We have author talks. We have, in October, you know, Halloween's a big deal around here, so we have a lot of programs leading up to Halloween and the Halloween Festival. We have the Irvington Witches come out and do a storytime, and then we try to put like sort of a spooky slant on all of our other programs, you know, whether it's storytime or the games program, things like that. Another cool thing we've been doing are type- ins. Our librarian, Casey Panigetti, has a collection of vintage typewriters from all sorts of different eras. Yeah, it's really cool, and so she'll set them up in here, and people can come and just play around on them. So, what's been neat is a lot of kids who've never seen a typewriter in person, much less touched one, like, get to, you know, play around on them, and then, you know, folks who grew up with them get to come back for nostalgia factor and get to play with them that way, too. So, yeah, it's been really cool. So, that's been exciting. We do monthly adult book discussions. The summer reading program for kids and adults went very well. Our PDA did a great job planning that, as always. We have a seed library, and this year, we got to do some support programs through the McFadden Lecture. So, Timothy Egan, of course, did the McFadden Lecture, and his book Fever in the Heartland, a lot of the things that happen in the book take place in the neighborhood. So, we did some programs go along with that. So, we had a woman from the Indiana State Museum, Kisha Tandy. She came out and did a talk on black life in Indiana during the time of the Klan. We had Charlotte Ottinger, who wrote probably the best biography of Madge Oberholzer, and she came out and did a talk that was really well-attended about her book and about Madge's life. And we also had hired Sampson Livingston to come out. He does history, historic walking tours around the city. And he came out and did three walks for our patrons, focusing on women of Irvington, so not just Madge, but women throughout history who lived in the neighborhood that were influential, and that was really, really positive as well. So, we really enjoyed having him out, too. In terms of partnerships and outreach, the Irvington Community Council's always very supportive. They gave us a bunch of money to get some old Halloween posters framed. So, we have about twenty-five or thirty more posters that are, that are getting framed, that are going to hang up in here from, every year, they have a Halloween poster contest, so, and these are the winning posters. So, we're going to have a bunch of those in here soon. Our city county counselor, Andy Nielsen, comes on and does open office hours here, which is nice. We have the ICAN, which is the Irvington Community Advocacy Network. They do a ton of work with getting resources, food, especially to folks in the area who need assistance. I was just asked to join a new advisory council that they're putting together for ICAN, so I'm going to be representing the library on that shortly when that, when that kicks off. So, they're great to have in our, in our neighborhood. The Irvington Historical Society, we do a lot of work with them. They do displays out here a lot for us on different topics, and they're, they're wonderful, smart people. The Irvington Halloween Festival is a great partner for us. We host the, the poster contest every year here. All the posters are on display. We host their window painting signup, and then we are closed for the festival, but they're pleased about that because it lets them use our entire parking lot. And, you know, Adam Parsons has let us, the last couple of years, make the lobby and the restrooms available to festival employees and the vendors, and that's gone really well, too, and they've, they've appreciated that. So, they're, they're wonderful, wonderful partners. Irvington Pride's a big deal in the neighborhood. Last two years, we've had our drag storytime in the morning, and then people kind of hang around for Pride, which starts shortly after that. So, that's worked out very well the last couple of years. The Irvington Community Schools, I mentioned, we get, the, the most of the kids that come in regularly here go to the Irvington Community Schools, and so we have a nice working relationship with their administrators. Our branch became a dementia-friendly certified branch through SOCA. A large percentage of our staff took a training on how to work with folks with dementia, and so we were given that designation. The Irvington Presbyterian Church has a justice advocacy group that does a lot of things in the neighborhood, like Resource Fair they have every year. They also do a lot of community reads, and they'll usually hold the, those here on different, they usually, it's a book on some social justice topic, so that's, that's been a nice partnership as well. And then the Overdose Lifeline supplies us with Narcan for our box out front, and so we're pleased about that as well. One other thing, we, of course, have a, have a renovation on the horizon here. Everyone on staff's very excited about that. We've been, you know, trying to brainstorm ideas and keep a running tab of things that we would like to see in the renovation. We're, you know, it's early in the process, but it's been great working with Diana Short and Adam Parsons, and so we're excited to see where that goes as well. So, that's it for me. Do you, do you have any questions or comments?
All right, any questions?
Oh, I wish we could go back to the days of the typing. I'll put them back out here just.
Oh, yeah, you got to, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Who did you say did your, did you say history walks?
Yeah, it's a guy named Sampson Livingston. Yeah. Yeah, he does them all over town, and he, yeah, he kind of, yeah, he's great. Yeah.
Irvington Pride?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that's the, like, the Pride Festival, not like the city, like Indianapolis Pride, but the, just an Irvington neighborhood one, and they do that every year. And so, yeah, we, we have a table at that usually, and then also, we do, like, our storytime will lead into that program, so.
Part of the Indy Pride Parade also?
Yeah, it's, I think it's like a smaller version of it, you know, for the neighborhood, but they're all kind of tied together. So, yeah, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thirteen private and public schools, plus the Irvington Community School. How are you building those relationships? What's that like? Is it with the principals, or?
Yeah. My, my librarians, the, the children, juvenile and teen librarians, they tend to be the ones that go out to the schools, you know, whether it's, you know, and we kind of try to meet the schools where they are in terms of, you know, we don't want to be too intrusive, but if they'd like us to come out and do storytimes and things like that, we definitely do. If they don't really have, you know, time in their schedule for that, and we can just drop off information about summer reading program, whatever it may be, we try to do that. And then for me, I tend to be in touch with the administrators, so I try to keep them abreast of, like, what we have going on, like our teen zone programs, if we have special things happening, I try to keep them, you know, informed on that. So, we have sort of at different levels. We try to, you know, reach out to everyone at the schools, so it works out well.
What's the challenge with that? Thirteen different, some of our libraries are working with maybe one or two, what's the challenge?
Well, I think one thing is that they all kind of, you know, because some of them are, you know, Warren Township or IPS or, or the Charter Schools, they all kind of have different schedules. So, part of it's that, and then also, honestly, you know, it can be tough because they have, you know, their school day with, you know, all the things that they have to do every day. So, sometimes it's hard for us to maybe find a way in, you know, like, can, you know, but we try to be really open to whenever we get requests. So, there's a school that's had us come out a couple of times to talk to their students about how to do research projects, so they might have a topic, and they'll reach out to us, and we'll send someone out to talk about that. So, we try to just make ourselves available, and then a lot of the times, they'll reach out to us about, about things, and we'll try to just keep them informed about what we're up to as well.
Well, the reciprocity is invaluable. Thank you so much for the, the work of building the relationships with the schools, so many of them. Great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the, from the board? All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Beederman. Next, you may recall, last month, we saw a video about socia, the social work team during the CEO's report. So, this month, we'd like to welcome Ms. Danielle Gertan, and Social Work Manager, and Ms. Jamie Murphy, Social Worker. Please come forward.
Well, good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Mr. Beederman and board, thank you for having us and allowing us this space to come and share a little of what we're doing these days. So, so. All right, so I'm Danielle Gertan, and this is Jamie Murphy. We are the Social Work Team. We also have two interns. We had one that did quit in October, due to some, some challenges. But we also have Lauren Alm, who has been with us since school started, and will be with us through the next semester as well. And hope to have some additional interns starting in January for the new semester. So, we've been doing our Central Office Hours. We've continued those every Monday and Wednesday. We're also, at the start of this year, started getting around to all of the branches, doing some rotating branch office hours, which allows us to kind of build connections with the community as well as with the staff. I think we appreciate being in that space, and staff seems to appreciate us being in that space as well. So, we enjoy doing that, and that allows patrons to come in and ask questions, get resources and information in the branch land instead of having to come down to Central. So, we do enjoy doing that. We have individual appointments at the branch. They can do it on the telephone virtually, and so that's nice to be able to connect with people who may need a little additional time. So, we've been able to do some of those appointments. We have our Community Resource Collective. We kind of changed the name of it at Central, bringing in those providers to provide information and resources in the branch, so people can connect with some of our partners who bring in information. They really like the free swag that some of our partners provide, so we always enjoy having them, but the, the information being at their fingertips while they're in the branch is the biggest part. We had our first annual Black Health Fair that we collaborated with the CBLC, and that was an exciting time just to see everybody in that space, getting medical information, and again, those links to resources, which are critical in these times especially. So, we've done community resource fairs for the branches, as well as our favorite part, well, at least my favorite part, outreach events, being able to go out to the community and share with the community about the social work program, what we're doing, and how they can access our services as well. And also sharing what the library is doing as a whole, because I know I can say for myself, when I started, I was unaware of all of the things that the library offered. And so, being able to learn all of the services and programs that are being provided to the community and to share that with the community has been huge. So, that is what we're currently doing, and I'll let Jamie share some information from the seat of the social worker.
So, I, as, my work as the social worker has really been exciting. I celebrated my first year in November the sixth, so I'm excited about that. As of November the thirteenth, we were able to have two hundred and ninety-seven individual contacts with patrons. As of today, it was four hundred and five. So, the social work department, the team, has really been able to make a great impact with our patrons. I think it's very important, especially when you're talking about building community and tying resources together with our patrons. And so, the housing has been, probably been the greatest need. So, out of those two hundred and ninety-seven contacts, individual contacts, forty requests were for housing. We had a hundred and thirty-nine who were just simply inquiring about the social work services and what social work looks like at the Indianapolis Public Library. A lot of our patrons are still amazed that the library is offering social work services, and so the, the ability to be in the library where they feel comfortable and can ask questions, and then also connect to other resources. Outside of housing, the second greatest need has been, of course, employment. So, out of those two hundred and ninety-seven contacts, thirty were asking about employment. So, employment includes job fairs or employment programs, also any type of employment or employers that they could connect with. And then just simply going back also to housing, that included housing, housing programs, especially for those who are unhoused, so just connecting them with the housing list, which is part of the coordinated entry. The next thing that was a high need was just other resources. So, those are coming, of course, as we know, they had the government shutdown, so those who are trying to still connect with Social Security Administration, those who are trying to connect with FSSA for food stamps. So, just really just trying to find information on how they can actually connect. And then the next thing was, we saw twenty-two people, or twenty-two contacts who are requiring basic needs. So, that would be your food, clothing, things like that. So, those are some of the things that social work has been able to do within this la, this last quarter, which started October the first.
We also have our bus passes that have been, continue to be a need. We've been able to, to provide those. We've gone through seven hundred and seventy-three of our grant-funded bus passes, and have been able to get additional bus passes through some of our community resources to provide bus passes for those that are coming in to, to utilize the Community Resource Fair. So, I think we, we have a consistent visit, we have consistent visits from a lot of our patrons. Some of them return back to share the, the good news of what they're doing. Hey, I got that job. Can you assist with transportation? Hey, I was able to get an appointment with the Social Security Office. So, we, we love hearing those success stories from people, and just, we always allow them to come back and ask whatever additional questions and get additional resources as well. So, I feel like the ones that we've been able to make connections with know that we're there. I had somebody come in last week that said, hey, one of my buddies told me that you guys were here, and I'm just coming to ask questions about what you do. And so, he wanted to see our new spaces. If you haven't seen our new offices, come visit us. They're very nice, and we are very appreciative of those. But we've been able to, to make some good connections and have some great conversations, and at the heart of it, that's what's, what's great, are those conversations and connections and the work that Jamie, myself, and Lauren are doing.
And so, referrals, how patrons are getting connected with the social work team is mostly through referrals. And so, the flyer is on the website, and so we get a number of people who are browsing the library website, and they are downloading the flyer, and so that flyer comes directly to our secure email box. Also, they're seeking out services through the library staff, and so they're turning in those flyers to them as well. And then, of course, as Danielle stated, we table every Monday and Wednesday, and so they're coming to see the table. They're getting information that way. We often have flyers that are on our table that they're coming to look at the information and just, just kind of find out what social work at the, at the library is doing. And so, the walk-up hours, the email, and then, of course, they can reach both of us by phone. And so, we've also had a number of organizations that have partnered with us, and so they are also referring patrons to us, and so, and those, those that they interface with as well. I think an interesting story, within one month, I was sharing with Danielle, we've had someone call from Illinois asking about resources. In Illinois, we had someone from Ohio. We had someone from another county here in Indiana. So, it's really just been interesting how, how the information has really been spreading about the social work team.
Um, but we have one who's been consistent and hope to come back.
This is going to be amazing.
Absolutely.
All.
Yes.
All that you are doing, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's just so good to hear all of this, yes. Thank you for your service. These are interns from various schools of social work, right?
Yes. We've had other schools that have reached out, um, because they've heard from others some of the work that we're doing and they want to get their, we've had, um, inquiry from Indiana Wesleyan as well as University of Kentucky. Um, so just trying to figure out what works for the, the team as a whole.
Your services are really valuable. I very much appreciate it. Interns can be a good thing, but there's only two of you. So, sometimes they are, it's more than just one-on-one. So, it's great that everyone's recognizing you, but rein some of that in. Thank you for what you do.
It was. It was great. I was surprised.
Any other questions, please?
You mentioned going out to the community. When you said going out to the community, what does that mean and where are you?
So, we've been able to do, um, just a lot of different affairs. So, whether it's been resource fairs, whether it's been job fairs. Uh, here recently, we were at the Fairbanks Hall, uh, which is part of IU Health and so they had a, a conference for those who are, uh, have, uh, been diagnosed with diabetes. We've been at Mary Rig, um, a couple of weeks ago for the truck or treat. We've been at Marion County Public Health Department. We have been so many different places. I think it's one of the things that I, I think that we both enjoy, just the ability to really get out. And that's where a lot of our community members are finding out about social work at the Indianapolis Public Library. So, when they come and see that bright orange, uh, tablecloth with, uh, social work written across, they are just amazed that the library is able to commit, uh, to serving the community with other services. And so, thank you so very much.
I've been around long enough to know when we did not have the social work. And, um, one of the executive members of the team wrote a beautiful article. Go ahead, raise your hand. Wrote a beautiful article about the importance of social work in the library and that connectivity. And so, growing this program and doing it in a way that really does make a difference in the community is another asset that the library brings and it's a powerful one. And again, been around long enough to know that we didn't always have it. And so, it's just really glad that you're committed to and making sure that those relationships work. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
Absolutely. Any other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll proceed with public comment. Do we have public comments for today?
Here's the seating.
Great. All right, I will, uh, read the, the statement and then we will begin the public comment. Okay. "We welcome feedback from the public about the Indianapolis, about our Indianapolis libraries and this is a time when the public may address the library board. If there are several individuals representing the same group, please select a spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please note this, uh, that this public comment time is not in appropriate form for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name and let us know if they're speaking on behalf of a group."
First one up is Lori Mulander. And then we have, uh, City County Councilor Andy Nielsen at you that.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak. My name's Lori Mulander. I'm on the Board of Directors at the Irvington Co-op. We live right next door to the library. Adam has been a tremendous support in listening to our concerns and helping us facilitate solutions. Um, and we have, uh, ascertained one of them. Mostly, our properties bed up to each other on the west side. Um, it was relayed to me that the church owns the property, the library leases the property in the parking lot. We had a terrible storm this summer where a tree on the property, which is essentially the, the residence there used as part of their backyard, which is okay, they take care of it and he's aware of it. And, um, anyway, a tree fell, a very large tree, and it fell on the railing. It fell so hard and these railings, they're green and they run the length of the concrete wall that supports the parking lot. They have probably been there since they were first installed decades ago. They are very rusty. Children play on them. I wish it was daylight so you could see how badly they need to be replaced. When that tree fell, two huge cracks about five feet apart from the outside to the inside, meaning they cracked all the way through from the top all the way down to the ground. They are starting to give way and one day they're going to give way soon and those cars that are parked there are going to go with it. And children after school play there and we're just scared some, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen, uh, especially with children involved. Um, I don't know if it's, uh, the library's responsibility or the Presbyterian Church. We had vandalism, um, when this building was built and the iron fencing was put up. They put it up down here at the north end where it, uh, butts up to our building and the library building. Well, somewhere along the line, it was vandalized and they look like metal, but they're not because kids or someone inebriated came up to play Superman and stretched those bars apart. Um, I first brought Adam's attention about a year and a half ago and he's been working on it, trying to get it rectified, replaced. And last Halloween, this is another lawsuit waiting to happen, her and myself found two young women, young teenage girls who were inebriated and were trying to get underneath that metal fencing. If they had got stuck or had damaged their arm or whatever on the damaged pieces, there would be parents screaming. Um, our concern is the safety of neighbors', children'. Uh, right now, if, uh, a lot of it could be fixed very quickly by just replacing that wall on the north end of the fencing. And if a fence with a double wide gate would be installed at the end of the concrete pad where, um, utility trucks come in if they have to get on the grass property and do work or the lawn mowers, the big lawn mowers that come in to cut the grass for the library. And that way, it would deter all foot traffic through there. Now, as far as the concrete wall goes, I mean, um, I do have video and I think I sent it to Adam for your records. Um, he has a copy of it, but, um, just in the last month, it's really, really bad. My five minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Yeah, City County Councilor Adam, Andy Nielsen.
Welcome, counselor.
Thank you, uh, Commissioners, Mr. President. Uh, my name is Andy Nielsen. I serve as the City Counselor for District 14, uh, which we're in tonight. Uh, Irvington is my home branch, but I'm the proud representative of two branches, uh, both Irvington and Warren. And as, um, our lovely branch manager, Adam, mentioned earlier, I regularly do monthly office hours here in Irvington, but also go out to Warren as well, uh, to connect with community. Um, I'm originally from Columbus, Indiana. I give you that history because in Columbus, there's one library. Um, it's a beautiful library, architecturally designed, it's wonderful. Um, but in small towns, uh, like Columbus with maybe a single library, a library's an important part of the city, um, and is obviously a part of the community. But now being a representative of a district of this size, approximately the size of the city I grew up in, I've come to realize just how important, uh, these branches are to the communities that they serve. And that's probably something you've heard before, but something I really want to emphasize. And, and more importantly, are, are the people who work here. They not only are our neighbors, but they're folks who we see out and about in the community. They aren't folks who just click in and click out. Um, also, I hope things that you've heard before. Um, but I come to you here tonight, uh, obviously as a city counselor, I, I take very seriously my role as the fiscal body for our city county. And I know that you all are grappling with the effects and the unknowns that come with SB 1. I can tell you, we really are. And what I'm here to talk about tonight is, and for the public's education, um, the library is a municipal corporation. You all set the budget. It works its way through the council and I get an up and down vote. But I am increasingly concerned, and Mr. President, I know you had a statement, I wish I could have heard all of it, but I am getting increasingly concerned with the financial situation of our library system. I am very concerned about it. I do think that we have time, but my ask to all of you, uh, and to the administration, which I also know is working on this, is to be very serious about how, come 2027, how we can ensure that everything I just said about the public library system in our city continues. Because I am not so certain, based on the current financial situation, that's a guarantee. And so, I really am here tonight as an advocate for all of you and every individual in this room and ensuring that the library system with such a strong reputation that it has in our community and ensuring the people who work here are also taken care of is centered, um, not just next year and the year after, but really in the five and 10-year window when as a city, we are really going to have to grapple with the effects that we have no control over. But, um, I come here tonight because you're obviously in my backyard, uh, but also thank you for your, for your service. In line with that, I know there were some policy changes on, on the board as it relates to staff. Uh, again, the people who work here are as important as the buildings that they work in. And I would hope and I ask that you, as you all are dealing, making these tough decisions, that you respect, uh, the dignity of work and ensure that people are taken care of in the process as well. I think having answers to each one of those pieces is going to be important for us as legislators at the local level in coordination with all of you to meet the challenges that are ahead. So, I don't come here in a, in a dire situation, more of an appeal that we continue to work together, we solve these, solve these issues that I see coming and I'm worried that if we don't create more coordination, is going to create a cliff that could have a very negative impact on our community. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, but I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to, um, what, does that conclude public comment?
Yes, sir, that's all.
All right. Let's move on to approval of minutes. Um, so there was regular meeting on October 27th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 27th, 2025?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded twice. Uh, will have any, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Rillo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. Let's move on to the Finance Committee. Dr. White, you are Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. I'm calling Alita to the table. We will go through our status of revenue at this time and expenses. Mary, will you join her?
Good evening.
Um, this will give a brief overview of our, um, of our organizational financial performance Currently on this slide, we have revenue as of October 31st, 2025. Um, our budget, um, percentage right now should be at 83%. For our revenue is at 61%. Again, this is, um, normal because we typically get all our revenue in November and December for the remainder of the year, uh, through the tax, uh, property taxes and into governmental mental, um, services. But if you look at fines and fees and charges for services and miscellaneous, you'll see that we have already met the budget goal of 83% or higher. Um, also for our investments, you'll see that the Huger Fund and Trust Indiana percentage is currently going low, lower than it was this time last year. However, we're at $133,119 that we have, um, made in interest for this month. On this next slide, um, you'll have a, a slope graph and you'll see the, how the budget is compared to October 2025 and October 2024. And it's right, excuse me, right in the line as we have budgeted for this month. And, um, to the right, you'll see a bar graph and this is the year-to-date. And again, this is all in, in a line because this is typically the cand- candice of the revenue for the library. And also in your board packet, before I move on to the expenditure, I want to point out that for, um, the parking garage, which is on page 39, that the year-to-date revenue for that, that's additional revenue for the library, is at 113,000 as well as for the shared system, that's on page 40 of your board packet, and that is also at 113,000 for the year-to-date as well. So, I just want to point that out because we typically don't really review that revenue, but if you get a chance to review the complete board package that is included in that. Now, Mary's going to review the expenditure for October.
Our largest expenditure category is personal services and benefits and, um, we have spent 74% of the budget, although 83% of the year is over by the end of October. So, that's good. It's under budget, uh, year-to-date as well as for the month. Supplies is the smaller category and, um, that is at just 52% of the budget for that. Uh, other services and charges, is it 12 million year-to-date or 66% of that line item budget? And capital outlay, which is for the books and materials, uh, and that is 66% as well of the budget used cash basis. So, and then we have the bar graph as well showing on the left, the bars for the expenses for the month, uh, with the gray being the budget. And this shows the largest category graphically as the personal services and benefits. Um, other services and charges is the next category, largest in capital outlay. And then the year-to-date is showing over on the right with yellow being the year-to-date budget and the 2025 year-to-date is blue. budget, and the 2025 year-to-date is blue. So we're showing that we are under budget on all the categories. So we're creating a healthy surplus that strengthens our financial position.
On this last slide for the Treasury Report, this is a combination of the revenue and expenses together. On the left side, you'll see the pots of revenue that we utilize to cover the expenses, and it provides the percentage of the overall revenue that we received. And on the left side, it provides the percentage of the expenditures that we have spent for
Any questions?
Sometimes our larger public doesn't know about the outlay for professional development. Can you say some more about what the professional development is, as a part of what is an ongoing cost for us? It's important that the larger public know.
Yes. For instance, we just had Staff Day, November 3. Our librarians are professionals, and it requires a master's degree, is my understanding, and they are licensed by the state library. And there are continuing education requirements for that. So in our talent and development division, we have, or department, we have training staff who coordinate and arrange for conferences to be attended, and that is disclosed to the board every month. Within, right past all of our list of payments that we've issued, is a list of the training attended that is outside of our in-house training.
And also for the budget category, you'll find that on page, it's in your detailed financials, I think that's page 28 of your board packet, and there's a training and development line item.
Okay. And the reason why I said it is because we make these meetings public, and so ensuring that the public is aware that when we're expending public funds, that we're doing it because it's tied to the professional growth, and it makes a difference for our staff to continue to grow and be ready for the challenges ahead and the kinds of knowledges that they need to have and the skills that they need to have as well. So it's a wise expenditure. Thank you.
Yeah. We always keep staff first. We keep them in mind.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Point of person privilege, I want to thank the Councilman for his remarks. SB 1 has created a storm that's coming, is going to impact many agencies, but especially schools and libraries of sort. I want to really thank you and your colleagues for how positively receptive you've been to Greg and Lolita when they come to you, because we're not an independent entity. We depend on the approval of City Council. And I want to say to you that we will have to work together in unity, because there are going to be some difficult decisions in the future. It's going to make us all look for ways to generate funding and hold on to fundings, et cetera. But just listening to Greg and Lolita, I really want to say how much the board, on behalf of the board, appreciate how cooperative and receptive you've been with them. And we, I agree with you, I'm sure we all agree with you, we have to pull together and stay together, because I think it was a great idea to look at protecting people from tax increases and property, et cetera. But I think there's a bigger scheme here that we're going to have to deal with, if we're going to protect the integrity of the future of our city, our education, our educational programs, libraries, et cetera. So we will definitely be looking to continue to cooperate with you guys, and thank you so much for sharing your concerns tonight. And I can assure you that we are aware of the repercussions of SB 1. The storm is coming, and we're going to have to get ready to work together to prosper in that difficult situation. So thanks again for your coming.
All right. Was that a question? Okay. Got it. All right. So any other questions?
Just clarification question. So the capital outlays, those are paid by bonds completely, or is it a, no?
No, that's coming out of operation.
Okay. Okay. That's all?
Okay. So is there a motion to accept the reported treasurer for October 2025 for filing for audit?
Some moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. We'll move on to some of the resolutions.
Yes. Resolution 49-2025, I'd like to call up Ms. Deb Lambert. Thank you, Mary.
Just strategizing regarding Dr. Palacio's last comment. I'm going to talk to you afterwards. Good afternoon, good evening, Library Board President and members of the board, and Mr. Hill. It's my pleasure to bring two resolutions with the Finance Committee that are renewals for very solid services that we renew every year. The first one is for Data Axel Reference Solutions Premium Plus. They've added the premium plus on there recently. And this service is used by our librarians for providing reference services. It costs $58,534.44 annually. Ever since 2017, they have not increased the price for us. We acquire it through our consortium membership with Midwest Consortium Library Services, getting 20% discount. So it's pricey, but we're getting it at a really good rate. And as I mentioned, it's a very popular, solid service. We've had 294,000 retrievals of, to answer reference questions, for the last year, and that averages 21 cents per retrieval for answer. So we're asking for a renewal for this service for another year.
The committee recommended to the full board a due path on this particular resolution.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So Resolution 49-2025 regarding Data Axel Reference Solution Premium Plus Subscription Database Renewal received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. All right. Resolution 50-2025.
Okay, this is the second one, another renewal for a very solid, popular service. This is for our electronic magazines that saw around the same number of usage, 296,000 issued checkouts for 2026, I'm sorry, for the last year of 2025. And we're on track for a 27% increase of usage over last year's usage. And this collection is a set of 5,000-plus titles that they're always trying to update with a large number of world language titles, and they're all available through the Libby app with our ebook services as well, so makes it very easy to access these titles. And we get so much more usage than our physical magazines, which are a dying medium. And this is where they are picking up quite a bit of usage. So we're asking for a renewal. The annual cost is $80,000, and that has been pretty consistent for the last five years or so as well. So we're asking for a renewal for this service.
Finance Committee recommended a due path for Resolution 50.
Great. Resolution 50-2025 regarding approval of overdrive e-magazine renewal received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion is carried. All right, moving to 51-2025. Thank you very much.
I'm trying to get you to come up on the screen. There it is. I'm sorry. Resolution 51-2025, this is a transfer between classifications and accounts. The transfer is for a total of $785,000. $45,000 is a transfer of operating funds to move from IT office supplies to IT computer service to cover services related to Baker Taylor services, which is ending. The cost of the syndetics unbound from innovative. This is a replacement service for Content Cafe by Baker Taylor. They announced they are shutting down operation, and there's an emergent need to cover these services. And then the other, the remaining of the transfers is for $740,000, is to purchase additional ebooks and e-audiobooks. This will improve our patrons' experience, wait times, inability to purchase patrons' requests that we have not been able to fill. This transfer would come from the medical and dental to capital outlays. The transfer has no impact on the total budget for the 2025, because this is funds just moving from one category to the next. It's just in different characters.
The Finance Committee recommends a due path to the full board for Resolution 51.
Resolution 51-2025 regarding transfer between classifications and accounts received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Just one clarification question on my part, just to make sure everybody understands that moving this money from personal services in the bucket of medical and dental insurance to books and materials will not have an impact on anyone's health insurance or premiums or the like.
Correct. The reason that we have a little bit more funds in there is because of during the time of budget, I was also in a negotiation period with the, or medical insurance renewal. So I kind of budgeted kind of high, ended up, you know, coming out to where there's no increases, so therefore I had some money to move.
Great. So being a good steward of our finances, you were thinking ahead in anticipating potential cost increase, and then because of that foresight, we're able to move this money without having to seek additional money.
Correct.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your diligence.
No, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. All right.
Next, just update. I want to share some good updates. This is because of our outstanding fiduciary oversight and being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars that during our Moody's rating that we had a couple weeks ago, we received a AA1 Moody rating, which is outstanding, which is the second highest rating, and we have continued to have this rating. And this is for us being, having a strong financial reserve. They really pointed that out because of the times that we're in now, we have to have some type of reserves to fall back on, especially with 2027 coming up. And then we have an aggressive principal repayment on the schedule, so when we get bonds, that we typically pay them off as quickly as we can. And also, our bonds did sell on November 18. And because of our good ratings, we had got a good interest at 2.814%, which is outstanding, which is saving interest on our bonds. So that's, again, being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. So that's.
Clarification on that.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm, we have the best bond rating of any municipal corporation currently, correct?
I can't confirm that, but I believe so.
You can say yes to that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Also want to thank you for maintaining a healthy surplus. That's incredibly important, and how we can always fall back on it, it makes a big difference in terms of how we manage it. And having that healthy surplus gives us a chance to have wiggle room, just as I said. Thank you so very much to you, Mary, and everybody who understands the necessity of doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last point of person privilege. We were talking about the typewriter and how antiquated and deviant it is today. This is a good time to reflect that the ebooks and the online movement is going to change the character and the functions of libraries in the future, and things like the counseling and other services we provide will become greater attractions for our operation. And I just appreciate the job that they, Mental Services, and everyone is doing, because we are an evolving service. And it's amazing just how quickly this is going to turn around. It's not going to be as slow as the typewriter. So it's going to be important for us to remember that. And I just commend all of you for the great job you're doing as we meet these challenges and create the positive changes that's going to keep people being involved with the library and being helped by the library services. So again, thank you, and that was not a question.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee, Dr. Palacio.
Thank you. We'll have Ms. Galarsky come up, and we have four resolutions to go through today.
All right. And I would like to invite Deb Lambert for the first one.
Hello again. I also want to mention that I brought Melissa Brooks, our Acquisitions and Collection Development Manager, here with me, who was very instrumental in working on this policy. So we're bringing with you a resolution to ratify a revision of our selection policy, which is actually known as our, get the, use, selection, and management of the materials collection policy, lovingly known as the selection policy. And we went through a process of researching involving many people from the Collection Development Team to look at other libraries and, you know, reflect on the needs that we've had over the last few years since we've last updated this, and did a lot of research. And then we got together in a team setting outside of the library to spend an off-site day focusing on this and finding ways that we needed to update it. And then we made a deliberate effort to engage in multiple rounds of feedback with the leadership team, and then with all library staff throughout the library system, to get their feedback on the draft that we came up with, and to incorporate, you know, their thoughts and their needs when using our selection policy and doing their jobs and serving the public, and their ability to answer patrons about our question, our collection, when things come up. And so we expanded and updated the policy to reflect our current practices and increase transparency. We received great feedback from staff about how extensive we updated it to answer a lot of their questions that they've had. So the proposed policy also aligns with our new strategic plan and initiatives for the leadership of the library in general, with, you know, obviously the involvement of the library board in developing that strategic plan is also. So there are. So there are an increased number of definitions for specific audiences that we're trying to address, and also specific collections that we've developed to focus on particular topics within the collection. And the, the other thing are things like AI that are impacting our world as well, and legality, to make sure that our policy is aligned with the legality of the federal government and the state government, and, you know, things like copyright law. So we did a very thorough response, review of that and updated it, and we shared it with you and discussed it with you earlier this month, and we're asking for ratification of our update to the policy.
Do you pass a recommendation from the committee?
Great, resolution fifty two dash twenty twenty five regarding the approval of proposed revision of collection management policies, policy six hundred, received a positive recommendation from the diversity policy and human resources committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
As I expressed in the committee meeting, I thought that the entire document was inclusive and carefully worded, and I really appreciate the work that your committees did on that. It's very thorough.
Thank you, Dr. Riolo.
Thank you, any other, any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved, the motion is carried. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to fifty three dash twenty twenty five.
All right, my first resolution is fifty three dash twenty twenty five is the appointment list. This comes to you every year, and this year we are asking for a three percent increase to all staff that qualify for the increase. Staff that qualifies are those that are not in a probational period, and it will reflect in the first paycheck in twenty twenty six. The list is included with the percentage in your board packet.
And this is coming fresh today, no, we didn't have a recommendation yet.
Very good, all right.
It was, it was.
Yeah.
Is it approved?
Yeah, it was approved.
Okay, then.
Okay, that's very good, thank you, that's all right, that's all right, I do it all the time. Uh, so, resolution fifty three dash twenty twenty five regarding the appointment list received a positive recommendation from the diversity policy and human resources committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved in sec, uh, it's been recommended in second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved, the motion is carried. All right.
All right, my next resolution is fifty four dash twenty twenty five. This is the adopting, um, schedule of pay grades, staff positions, benefits for the library. No changes, as Lolita mentioned, our health insurance stayed the same premium. We are including one new holiday, which is the day after Christmas, and we are increasing our health savings account, uh, two hundred per tier for twenty twenty six. But other than that, the resolution is the same as previous years.
Just to let me additional signatures.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good.
I, I heard everything, it was wonderful.
Perfect.
Right, so.
We did have a due pass recommendation of this one as well.
Excellent, so, uh, resolution fifty four dash twenty twenty five regarding adopting a schedule of pay grades, staff, positions, and benefits for the library employees received a positive recommendation from the diversity policy and human resources committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved, the motion is carried.
All right, my last resolution for the night is resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty five. This is the approval for the additional pay. As Lolita had mentioned, we had a surplus in our health and benefits budget in staffing, so we were looking to do an additional compensation to full times, we're going to do fifteen hundred for part-time, eleven hundred, and for hourly staff, nine hundred dollars. This will be for all qualifying staff members, so those that are in a probational period don't qualify, and staff, staff members that are not in an active payroll as of November thirtieth cannot qualify. The additional compensation, if approved, will be received on December nineteenth.
All right.
Do you pass a recommendation from the committee?
Great, resolution, can we pass back fifty four? Thank you. Resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty five regarding approval of additional employee compensation received a positive recommendation from the diversity policy and human resources committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
All right, it has been rec, uh, recommended and seconded, any discussion? Uh, I will start the discussion, I'll say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to, to vote on such a thing, I, I think many people have echoed the hard work that our staff has put in, so being in a position to be able to do this is very important, and, you know, we're just very thankful that, that we are in a financial position where we're able to do such things, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Amen.
All right, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. Okay.
That concludes our presentation.
Great. We've got, we've got them going both ways now, all right. There we go, yeah. All right, so, uh, facilities committee, Dr. Riolo, do we have anything for today?
The facilities committee shined so brightly that we decided that you can only take so much of our awesomeness, and we're giving you the month off. We will be back strong in December.
Shining bright, speaking of shining bright, uh, library foundation update.
Yes, there's more brightness, but I'm going to let you listen to all this. Okay, um, our president, Roberta Jackers, will be here next month, so you do have, as board members, a few more weeks to make any queries to her that you would like her to discuss when she's here. The board of directors had, for the foundation, has passed the twenty twenty six budget that includes two and a half million dollars for library programs and services, and thanks to the generosity of ninety-five library and foundation staff members, the twenty twenty five staff campaign was very successful and raised more than twenty-five thousand dollars in just four weeks, so that's good. We congratulate all staff that were involved with staff day, and they were proud to confer the Beth Tindall Award to Deb and Mike Errett, and the foundation also supported gift cards, Lillian Childress Hall Scholarship, and cash awards for the day, and major award winners included Melinda Mulligan for the Helen Norris Award, Flo Schick for the Lillian Childress Hall Scholarship, Brandy Winston for, was recognized for leadership, and Elizabeth Tarr for exceptional experience. And the foundation thanks one hundred seventy-eight donors who made gifts this past month, including top institutional donors Alan Whitehall, Cluse Charitable Foundation, Avis Foundation, Blue and Ink, Comcast, Cortiva, McAllister Machinery Company, and PNC Foundation. And this past month, the foundation provided more than one hundred forty thousand dollars to the library for major initiatives that include bilingual storytime, Seed Library, On the Road to Reading, and Young Adult Authors' Visits. Good stuff.
Great, thank you very much. So before we move to the report of the CEO, I wanted to give a special thank you to Mr. Hill for this year. We talked about it at the beginning, we're in the week of Thanksgiving, and you've done yeoman's work with the library and, and continue to do so, and it's exemplified through all of the positive feedback that we continue to receive about the library and all of its operations, and the fact that we're able to laugh and, and be jolly in these meetings is in no small part because of the work that you do tirelessly behind the scenes. I've heard from people, even on staff day, how meaningful it is for you to, you know, wake up at five or four in the morning and go on the delivery runs, and, and from you taking the time and having an open door policy to creating sets of awards to recognize the hard work of all the employees here, that doesn't happen by accident, and it doesn't happen, you know, for any other reason than all of the thoughtfulness that you put into everything. So on behalf of myself, and, and I know the board, thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I was daydreaming, sorry about that. All right, welcome, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Biederman, uh, thank you, NDPL board. Before you is the confirmatory resolution fifty six twenty twenty five regarding finances, personnel, and travel, it's in its typical format, that's before you each month, I ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve resolution fifty six dash twenty twenty five regarding, regarding finances, personnel, and travel? Dr. Payne moved, is there a second?
Seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and thirded, uh, so, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved, the motion's carried. Mr. Hill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this presentation highlights activities for the month of October, your full report includes, um, branch programs, PDA, it also includes media highlights, digital inclusion, we love our library and intellectual freedom updates, additional information on agenda items is also will be in this particular presentation. Overview, we'll have daily impact, program review, we'll do a staff day highlight, staff recognition, website visits, staff opportunities, and some upcoming events. The first thing is our daily impact for, this is for the month of October, on a typical day, we had seven thousand two hundred and eight visitors, circulation, we circulated thirteen thousand seven hundred items, the visitor to circulation ratio is about two items per person, which is pretty good. Programs, we had thirty-two programs on any given day, um, that was attended by five hundred and seventy-six patrons, or one in thirteen visitors participated in a program, or eight percent of, of the visitors that we had on that particular day participated in a program. PC users, we had one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine PC users for our seven thousand two hundred and eight visitors, that's about seventeen, eighteen percent of our visitors on any given day used a PC, or one in six visitors. This is strong engagement, many libraries report ten to twenty percent of visitors using PC, so we're at the higher range of PC usage on any typical day. New cardholders, we had a hundred and twenty-three new cardholders, which is about one point seven percent of visitors on any given day in October, which is roughly, again, one in fifty-nine visitors received a new library card. Programs across the library system, we had six hundred and fifty-five youth programs attended by fifteen thousand eight participants, with an average of roughly twenty-three participants per program. Adult, and this is top to bottom, left to right, the bottom is adult programming, three hundred and thirty-four adult programs, with about three thousand participants, with an average of roughly eight point nine participants per program. Bilingual Storytime is one of many programs that continue to welcome families that connect them to many of our library resources that we provide. In October, two hundred and eighty attendees joined bilingual and American Sign Language, ASL, at fifteen of our locations for October. In October, Central hosted a nonprofit series, which consisted of fifteen programs, and that's usually presented in the spring and the fall, held twice a year, this fall, the series had over two hundred patrons that benefited. I know Dr. Riolo talked a little bit about, uh, staff day and some of the award recipients, I just wanted to just mention those again. The Helen Norris Distinguished Service Award was Melinda Mulligan, the Beth Tindall Award, Mike and Deb Barrett, and the Laura Bramble Distinguished Service Award is Kathleen Stewart. On staff day, we had about three hundred and seventy-five staff who participated, which is about nine percent more than what we had last year, so a really good turnout. There was two new individual awards this year, one of them is the Outstanding Leadership Award, and the other one is the Exceptional Experience Award. The award includes a citation, a CEO coin, and a one thousand dollar prize. The Outstanding Leadership Award honors a library's staff member who demonstrates exceptional leadership by inspiring and guiding others while fostering a positive, innovative, and service-oriented work environment. This year's winner was Brandy Winston from the Central Library, and she is the manager of Central, uh, Circulation Services. The Exceptional Experience Award honors individuals who consistently go above and beyond to provide exceptional experiences for everyone. This award recognizes team members who exemplify our values through hospitable service, honest and clear communication, and commitment to creating welcoming environments, and this year's winner was Elizabeth Tarr from the Info Zone, and she is a youth multimedia learning specialist. She actually had a couple nominations, and they were phenomenal, had a lot of really good things to say about the work that she does, and we appreciate both of our winners. Also new is the Exceptional Experience Branch Award. This award recognized quarterly to the location whose tell us survey results from patrons show strong community feedback as measured by both volume and intensity of positive responses. This award demonstrates the location's commitment to NDPL's values, delivering exceptional experiences, and listening and sharing to promote respectful, inviting communication. The system-wide winning branch receives a traveling trophy, and a special window cling will be added to the branch entrance, announcing to everyone who walks through the doors that you are an Exceptional Experience Branch. In addition, we have system-wide award winners for each region, so Southport was the system-wide winner, so congratulations to Southport for being exceptional, and then the regional winners were, West Region was West Indianapolis, the mid-region was Info Zone, and the east region is the Martindale-Brightwood Branch, so congratulations to all. October Star Awards, um, I'm going to read these off here real quick, and I apologize if I mess up a name here, Deviopathic for Patron Services, Charlie Kane, Jordan Hunt, and J.R. Edwards, they are patron services, and they are from the Central Library. Community involvement is Bruce Benton and Kathleen Services from Outreach and Volunteer Services. Page Excellence is Lydia Cheeseborough from the Central Library, and other duties assigned is Rachel Nevada Wood from the Central Library. Volunteer Services is Jake Rogers from Hallville. Peer support, Blaine Crabtree, Glendale, and committee's choice is Todd Gilbert and Jill Laker from Beach Grove, so can we give them a round of applause? And earlier, Adam Todd had mentioned Mo Scott and the work that she has done here, and I'm trying to wait for her to come in.
Yes, three children graduated from Christmas.
All right, all right.
Yes.
Okay, that's all, and I would just ask you, you could just, right there, where you at, Mo was fine, so Adam talked earlier about the, the positive. So Adam talked earlier about the positive impact that she has had and I just want to read a little something that came from Adam here. "In her capacity as Irvington's LSA, Mo has created relationships with many of our patrons that, while remaining professional, transcend the typical patron LSA interactions. By being a friendly and welcoming presence at our branch, Mo has become someone who our patrons trust, including our most vulnerable patrons. Mo routinely helps patrons by handing out chip handbooks of help, making them aware of food and shelter resources in the area, or simply lending an ear and offering an encouraging word. Sometimes teenage patrons can be difficult to connect with, but by monitoring, monitoring and even assisting with our daily teen zone, Mo has made genuine connections with our teen patrons rooted in mutual respect and trust. On a few occasions, teen patrons have confided in Mo about serious issues like bullying, food insecurities, et cetera. There has been a noticeable change in the environment at Irvington since Mo started working here. Her ability to assess and handle situations that might otherwise turn into major incidents has created a safer and more pleasant library for staff and patrons." So on behalf of the executive leadership team, I'd like to thank you for your impact here at Irvington and I want to present you with a CEO coin and also, most of all, thank you for your presence.
Thank you. I hope your three children are watching.
You're welcome. And then, real quick, retirements, we had Melinda Mulligan, she spent 27 years, she was the manager of the Wayne Branch and I did go to her retirement, we presented her with the plaque you see here. Also, there was a proclamation read by Jared Evans, the chairman of the Municipal Corporations Committee, and we also had a host of partners from the Wayne Township Schools also join us, so congratulations to Melinda. All right, real quickly, this is the October library website visits. Our website consists of multiple sites, including our main site, there's a blog, the catalog, an event calendar, and much more, is a very extensive, complex system which is maintained by our data and web systems service team led by Jeff Edmister. Can we give Jeff a round of applause? And also, our communication and marketing team manages content with input from staff across all library departments. Great job on maintaining the website and there's just a few numbers up there, that's in your packet, so it's kind of hard to see. But online catalog, Biblo Commons led the way with over 500,000 hits on the website, so thank you for keeping the website updated. Next is staffed opportunities. We did have staff book discussions this year. The last book discussion that we had in the month of October was Say the Right Thing, How to Talk About Identity, Diversity, and Justice. We had 15 sessions and that was attended by 197 of our staff, so thank you, Kim Buebers, our Access Culture and Belonging Officer, for putting that together. We also had Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services, we had six staff who attended that. And the LGBTQ+ History, which was in-house virtual, we had 13 staff who attended that. And then last, upcoming events, we have Nutcracker Suites with the Indianapolis Ballet at Central Library, that is on Saturday, December 6, 11:30 to 12:30. And here at your Irvington branch, we have Meet a Reindeer with Silly Safaris, that is Tuesday, December 9, 6:30 to 7:30. And then we have our first ever NDPL Staff Holiday Party, which is at the Central Library on Friday, December 19, from 6 to 9. All board members are invited to attend and we hope to see you there. And that is the end of this portion of my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. If not, I will have Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie come up and she will do a strategic planning and assessment plan update.
From the board, can you also extend to Melinda our appreciation for her work? I've worked closely with Wayne Township Public Schools and the partnership with Wayne Township Public Schools and the work that Melinda has done, not to mention the fact that we've done plays over there and reenactments over there at the library, it's just tremendous. And if our board can extend a deep and sincere appreciation for her leadership for all these years.
Yes, ma'am, will do.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill?
The date, the time for the holiday party? She said she wanted to come and party.
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Six to nine. Dr. White will be there with Balzahn. You'll be there. Yeah.
Thank you all for inviting me yet again to talk about our strategic plan. So it's quarter three of the very first year of a three-year strategic plan and in year one, our goal is to build a strong foundation so that we can reach the lofty goals that we have set. So as a reminder, the way our reports are set up when it comes to our strategic priorities and our goals, the priorities, the overarching themes, the goals or the individual categories under those themes we're really focusing on, we're looking for blue arrows. In particular, in year one, you're really looking for that middle blue arrow which is saying no significant change, it's basically less than 5% from your baseline, but ideally positive change, not negative in that area. And if you're really lucky, you see these positive desire change, these dark blue upward-facing arrows. And anytime we see a negative, not desire change, we don't panic, we take a closer look and see if we can understand and explain. So I'm going to walk you through just a handful of what's in your larger printed packet, but as always, I'll be able to answer questions about either printed packet or the live data. And I'm going to focus looking at the priorities first. So the very first priority we're going to talk about is learning. And we're going to see our first orange arrow on this slide and it's a great example of why we ask questions and look when we see orange arrows. So over on the left-hand side, you can see since previous quarter, we're, you know, heading in the right direction in most areas. We have circulation per active cardholder, e-resource use per active cardholder, and e-resource use, of course, is databases, learning platforms, et cetera. And then for the programs that are tied to the strategic priority of learning, we have some key questions that we measure. So you'll notice that e-resource uses is seeing a large jump since the last quarter because we're heading into the academic year. And if you look at the column compared to 2024, things are stable and positive in the bottom two categories, e-resource use and learning measurements. But that top right corner, we have a relative change of minus 5% and an orange downward-facing arrow. So it turns out that we're great at turning our cardholders into active cardholders, so our active cardholder numbers have been really growing and our circulation hasn't quite kept pace. So this is not something we're going to panic over. Essentially, since circulation is growing, not growing at the same rate and active cardholders is growing rapidly, a little bit more rapidly, this ratio winds up being trending in the downward direction. So we're going to keep an eye on it and hope that as we have more active cardholders over time, they'll become borrowers at the same levels of our historical active cardholders. So I think that that's an interesting metric to keep an eye on, not something to panic about. In fact, if anything, we're kind of victims of our own success of doing a great job of enrolling some new cardholders. We just want to make them borrow and engage more. Next up, we have belonging. And here we look at people count, web traffic, and percent active cardholders, and this is what you'll see where we're seeing that growth in active cardholders here. And then all the programs related to belonging, we have two different key questions we look at from our program surveys. What you'll find here in belonging is because it's a new category, we can't compare it as much to 2024, so we're really looking at that short-term lens to measure progress so far. And you'll see that we've gone down just a little bit in our key questions on the bottom left when we look at the program survey, not enough to really be statistically relevant. So it's something that we'll keep an eye on and really take a hard look at that at the end of the year to see if we can learn anything, especially because one of those questions is the program helped me feel more connected to others in the community and that was something new that we were trying to measure for this strategic priority. When you look at people count and web traffic, steady or moving upwards? People count going upwards, it's very exciting, but our baseline year was 2024 and we had a few more branch closers that year. We are incredibly lucky, for a brief period of time, we have all of our branches open, so we'll expect that this will be strong and we might see it soften a little bit as we head into future quarters as renovations and remodels start to hit again. And of course, percent active cardholders, it's going great and we are happy to see that and we will continue to turn those active cardholders into regular borrowers to support all of our metrics. Next, we have well-being. Well-being, we have the partner survey, which is something that we haven't started yet. I think previously I've been coming and saying we're going to have some results in quarter one, still optimistic we're going to have some results in quarter one, we did take a little bit of a pivot there. We realized that the system that we use to track partners was due for an upgrade, so we're going to make sure that upgrade is complete so that as we launch that survey, we can not only measure response to the survey, but long-term impact and how we engage with our partners. So that one doesn't have any measurements yet. And then for well-being programs, you're going to see that our patrons love our well-being programs. All the program surveys usually tend to be in that 90%, we don't have a whole lot of room for growth, but you do see some little bit of wobbling from quarter to quarter, but not enough to be more than 1% most of the time. Now, in each quarter, we take a closer look at one particular strategic priority and the goals underneath it. This quarter, that is going to be well-being. And underneath well-being, what we'll find is we have our first goal, which is social service connection. You heard from the social work team today, they do a fantastic job and you'll see that they are really hitting their strides, really growing and have some really ambitious goals for this year. If anything, I would expect in future years, as we get those long-term lenses, we'll start to see that from our baseline, we had a really strong growth, but maybe we might see this growth slow in that short-term lens because there is finite capacity to that team. So really excited to see this and I'm really proud of the progress they've been making. Next, we have mental well-being and physical well-being, so this looks at programs offered and program attendance. Our patrons love, especially our physical well-being programs, they're well-attended, they are consistently well-attended regardless of where we offer them, so these have had some strong growth. A lot of that growth is because for physical well-being, we tend to do a spring flight and then a fall flight of programs for people to choose from at the different branches. So summer, we might see a little bit fewer programs offered just because we don't want to compete for community room space with summer reading program programs. Next, we have socioeconomic well-being and you'll see that it comes with a paragraph to explain the data because we see two orange arrows and one of them is huge. Relative change for program attendance was minus 51%. We look at programs offered and program attendance paired together because they both tell us ultimately what that attendance story should be. Essentially, when I was like, oh wow, why is there this huge number? I went and looked at socioeconomic well-being, quarter one and quarter two, we have taxpayers and we do a lot of taxpayer education and support programs that really drives engagement in those first two quarters. So this is something that as we develop a long-term lens for this, we start to compare quarter to quarter versus to prior quarter, we'll stop seeing these wild variations, but it was nothing to panic about and we have plans, I've already seen the community action plans for next year to continue those tax education assistance programs next year, so we're expecting that we'll have strong numbers when we do the year-to-year comparison and hopefully some growth. And since I'm talking about well-being and the goals, underneath the goals, we have the objectives, which are the specific actions. You can see a update for each individual objective in your packet, I'm just going to kind of give you a speed run of some highlights. As a reminder, the symbols here look very similar, but they mean something slightly different. Our objectives are harder to measure in a quantifiable way, I can't tell you percentage growth sometimes, but I can tell you if we're on the right track or not. So we have some, a few more symbols to let you know where we're at at a glance and then in your packet, you'll find that there are paragraphs describe each one. I wanted to give you a slightly different perspective of the social work team than what they shared with you earlier. One of the things they're doing is developing staff tools and recommending staff tools. They did a great job this past quarter of developing an internal tool on the library's SharePoint page that staff can access and then also recruiting a physical handbook of helps to be donated and distributed by our staff. So our goal here was to essentially connect staff with tools to help provide social service resources and connections and we have hit that goal. And in fact, the new internet page that they launched has been used by 125 staff and remember, we're about 600 staff in general, so it's a pretty large number and it was accessed over 400 times and I expect those numbers will continue to grow in future quarters. Next, we have seed packing. There are very few objectives that were specifically related to volunteering, so this is one that I really like to take a look at. We had set a goal of 300 volunteers by 2027. We've smashed that, we have exceeded that in year one, so this is something where we'll be looking at, maybe taking a look at setting a new goal for the next year or by the end of 2027, since we've already exceeded it. Seed packing is something that we do to support our very popular seed library. We couldn't offer that program without volunteers who come and do somewhat monotonous work of counting how many seeds go in each packet or measuring them out. And so we took this as an opportunity to connect volunteers with each other for a chance for community engagement and support and that has been popular and in fact, we have an upcoming session coming up here if you are interested in engaging and volunteering in this, in addition to your volunteer work as Board of Trustees members, I hope that you'll look for this on our program calendar. Lastly, we have W3.2. This is going to talk about package programs. Package programs is a very library word and it essentially means that our programming department is developing a series of programs that can be offered at multiple branches or at a single branch if it has a unique audience. And so they had set a goal for a couple of our objectives to say, rather than saying we're going to run 20 programs, they would develop these package programs so they could tell her that package program to the branches where it made the most sense and where they could find presenters for it. So they had set a goal of three career development package programs, which they have already met for the year. And you can see up on the top right corner, one of them, still has a session coming up, is Meet a Professional, which is, Is IT Right for Me? It's a break and fix session with Priscollus Indianapolis and that's going to be at, the final session is going to be December 4th, 1:00 PM at Glendale, so it's a great program. But we also had Charting Your Career, a three-part series at Martin Dell Brightwood, and then for the teens, Cookies and Careers with Purdue University, it was offered at six branches in the spring. So we'll continue to try and dial this in, you'll notice I didn't put attendance numbers on here. We have variable attendance for the career development program, it's something where you have to offer the right program for the right audience at the right time and so that's definitely something they think we're going to continue to experiment over the life of the strategic plan, but these were well-thought-out programs and we're happy to continue to dial them in and get them an audience. So that's my live presentation. Of course, we also have everything in the board packet. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Great, any questions from the board?
Thanks for putting this together and updates and I'm going to also take a little pause here to echo President Biederman in thanking everybody and leadership of Mr. Hill, the whole executive team and leadership, whole staff. I know we have another meeting in December, so I'll say thanks again then. But I like what you were saying, that don't panic, don't panic. Thanks for that, not panicking, but also see it, the quarter to quarter, more of a representation of seasonal variation rather than, are we looking at growth or whatnot? Because season to season, like you mentioned, it'll change, so it gives us a characterization of that variation.
It does, and so I think that'll be something that you can learn from in year one. In year two, we'll start to compare to prior year quarter and then to the baseline, so our short-term lens just gets longer as we move through this. And then, of course, next quarter, I'll be coming to you and showing you this entire year in comparison to the prior year and you won't have that quarter-to-quarter comparison. I do think it helps you learn a lot about how things change seasonally, but it can be alarming to look at those orange arrows in the short term, so that longer lens, that'll start to even out a little bit in future reports.
And also, I've been, just a side comment, I've been seeing a lot of those, we love the library signs around when I drive around, so thanks for doing this, it's great.
Absolutely. And I know Mary has some great objective reporting, I'm sure you'll see at the end of the year around that for that objective.
Questions?
Not much of a question, but a comment. The latest issue of American Libraries speaks about well-being and it talks about how important well-being is for the professional staff of the library. And the fact that the library here is really working hard to promote well-being is noted as an important part, just reading a quote. "Of course, there's always a problem with funding. Professional development is seldom well-funded and is often one of the first budget items to be cut. In fact, what our library has done has been to support it." And this is a positive thing. "Positioning it as part of well-being may receive better support because it avoids the misconception that professional development funding is used to..." that professional development funding is used to select individuals to attend a conference as a privilege or a reward. But that's not what this library does. What this library does is recognize the necessity of well-being and professional development. And so while we're checking out the larger public, working with the internal professional development is a major plus. So thank you and thank you to the staff for making sure that we do the right things with that financing and opportunity for professional development. It's a good article and I recommend others read it because it does speak to what the American Library Association does speak to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Concludes the CEO report.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, no unfinished business, no new business, future agenda items. This time is made available for discussion of items not on the agenda, which are of interest to library board members. And the opportunity is given to suggest items be included on future library board meeting agendas. Do any board members have something to suggest for the December meeting?
Just one.
Please.
One of the things that I've noticed, and I'm sure all of us have, is the importance of the volunteers and community outreach. We've not drawn much attention to how important and critical those volunteers are at every single branch. And you always mention it, Greg. But for the larger public to know that the outreach and community volunteer services, including the Bookmobile and the things that we do, are invaluable. Just like to draw attention to that and the community action plans.
Great. Please.
Just one thing. The two, well, the lady who spoke about the tree falling on the fence and had the, that was so cold, you know? When they, they don't understand that this is not really a board issue. This is, it goes down to the CEO and the different departments about that. But when they come, like, there was a brave lady who came to speak to us. But when she was finished talking, we had nothing to say. And I've been looking at this over the months on the library board. We should have some kind of statement to say, thank you for your concern, your comments. We need to direct that to the appropriate individual so that they won't just be cut dry. They need to know that, thank you for having concerns about teenagers and other problems that could occur or possible lawsuits that could occur. But this is not the board's action to take at this time. However, we direct those concerns. Now, I'm sure that Adam Todd has talked to the ladies several times. They decided to go to the top. And when they go to the top, most of the time, we sit silent and look at them like they have three heads. And they kind of slipper off, embarrassed. But if we could just have like a thank you kind of comment and let them know, here's the next step we're going to go to, and turn that over to our people who can take care of it. If that means they have to make a recommendation to the board, that would be okay too. But you guys understand what I'm saying? Because we are so invitational now and we're so positive. And I just thought, I've seen that before. And I think it's kind of cold. And so at least we could say thank you and kind of redirect them because they will leave thinking, well, maybe I made a difference or something. But to her, she's going to feel that we just didn't take the time even to say anything to her remarks. But I know we're not that kind of board because I love our board. But we need to let, because we talk about the public and that's our public. And she needs to not leave and think that the board doesn't care. We do care. However, our functions are different and our procedure for action doesn't start with the board. Okay, so.
I want to take exception to what you said. Almost every meeting, when someone does present, there is a thank you. Almost always, we say thank you. And this time, because we did not, I think you're right to point it out. But almost every meeting, in fact, I usually write Laurie Philander, I wrote it down, Presbyterian Church, properties butt up against the railings, the tree fell down. Because I wanted to say thank you, but we didn't make that time. And your point is well-taken.
After thank you, we should have another little statement to close it out. Because thank you, but that's what I'm saying. It just take a few sentences or a paragraph. But I agree with you. I do remember times we have said thank you. But today was seen to be just cold.
All right, well, thank you for that. And I agree, we'll add something to that effect. Yeah, that's a very good comment. All right, any, anything else? Okay. Next, board meeting. So this is going to be the end of the regular board meeting. We have to do the annual meeting still, so don't, don't leave. It's not over yet. But this meeting's going to be over. But our next regular meeting on the board is December 15th, 2025, at the Hawville Branch Library, 2121 West Michigan Street. It begins at 6:30 p.m. And this meeting is adjourned. All right, now. Well, so what's beautiful is that I believe the notice said it would run one into the other. So we can begin, we don't have to wait unless.
Typically, we'll run those one follows immediately following.
It's cold in here. Is anybody else cold in here?
Yeah, they're cold in here.
I tell you, I wore mine in the shirts. I'm good.
Yeah, I put on my library shirt. So, so do we need to take a moment? Do people need a moment? Or can we? Okay. All right, so I'd like to call to order the annual meeting of Indianapolis Marion County Public Library. It's November 24th, 2025. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Beederman.
Present.
And Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Plasio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Riolo.
Present.
Dr. White.
Present.
And Ms. Whittard.
Present.
Great, all right. I recognize a quorum and, and good to see you. All right.
She's been there all along.
Her box has been moving up and down and left and right.
I saw it. I did. I was getting seasick watching me move around the screen.
All right, so the first matter on our agenda for the annual meeting is election of officers. Pursuant to the bylaws, our officers are elected for one-year terms. And the term of office for each current officer ends December 31st, 2025. The term of these office selections will be from January 1, 2026 to December 31, 2026. In accordance with the bylaws, no officer except treasurer may serve in the same role for more than three consecutive terms. Election of officers is to be accomplished by nomination and roll call. We'll now commence the process. So we'll start with president. Nominations are now in order for office of president. Do we have any nominations?
Nominate Mr. Beederman for president.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other nominations for president? Okay.
Move that the nomination be closed.
So, so we'll close the nominations. I wanted to make sure there was enough time for anything. So, Ms., would you?
Mr. Beederman has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? If none, nominations are therefore closed. And I will call for a roll call vote to elect Mr. Beederman to the office of president of the board for the term beginning January 1, 2026 and ending December 31st, 2026. Angie?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Yes.
Dr. Payne. Dr. Riolo.
Hi.
Dr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Whittard.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
I approved. Well, thank you all very much. I, I'm honored to be selected again and I look forward to serving this board. So thank you. All right, nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. We'll take nominations for the office of vice president. I nominate Dr. Matata.
Second, any motion?
All right, Dr. Matata's been nominated. Are there any further nominations? All right, nominations are therefore closed. And I'll call a roll call vote to elect Dr. Matata to the office of vice president of the board for the term beginning January 1, 2026 and ending December 31st, 2026. Angie, can we have a call of the roll?
Yes, Dr. Matata. Dr. Plasio.
Yes.
And Dr. Payne.
Yes.
And Dr. Riolo.
Hi.
Yes, Dr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Whittard.
Approved, yes.
And Mr. Beederman.
Yes. Okay, so congratulations, Dr. Matata.
Thank you. Thank you to the board.
All right, moving on to secretary. Nominations are now in order for the office of secretary. Do they have any nominations? Dr. White?
I nominate Dr. Riolo.
Any, any other nominations for secretary? Okay, so Dr. Riolo's been nominated. Nominations are closed. I'll call for a roll call vote for Dr. Riolo for the office of secretary of the board for the term beginning January 1, 2026 and ending December 31st, 2026.
Dr. Matata.
Yes.
Dr. Plasio.
Yes.
Dr. Payne.
Yes.
Dr. Riolo. Dr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Whittard.
Yes.
And Mr. Beederman.
Yes. All right, congratulations. Oh, yes, you get to sign twice now. All right, nominations are now in order for the office of treasurer. I nominate Mary Rankin for treasurer. Anyone else nominate anyone else? Hearing none, we'll have a vote on it. All right, so Ms. Mary Rankin has been nominated. And the nominations are closed. I'll call for a roll call vote to elect Ms. Mary Rankin, the office of treasurer, for the term of January 1, 2026 and ending December 31st, 2026. Can we have a call of the roll?
Dr. Matata.
Yes.
Dr. Plasio.
Yes.
Dr. Payne.
Yes.
Dr. Riolo.
Yes.
Dr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Whittard.
Yes.
And Mr. Beederman.
Yes. All right, that one's passed. Congratulations on another year, Ms. Rankin. We look forward to all of your signing. All right, now we're going to move on to Resolution 57-2025, the annual resolution. Annually, the board approves its annual resolution to approve, confirm, and reauthorize those matters, which are addressed annually. The resolution has been circulated in advance of the meeting and it's in its standard form with only one modification, being an increase in the hourly rate for our legal counsel. Can I have a motion to approve the annual resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne. Dr. Riolo. Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Whittard.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved. All right, resolution is passed. There being no additional business to conduct at this annual meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one thing to address. We know that Dr. Patricia Payne has served this library board for how many years now, Ted?
Many.
Sixteen, for a long time. For a long time, straight through construction of the branches, straight through the redesign of Central, straight through the ups and downs through COVID. And, and it has served as a signature in all these documents for the secretary.